It is March 16th, we're down here at Rochester City Hall to speak to the city council. Let's go ahead and get inside.
The time for members of the public to comment on any and all matters. We will now begin our speak to council session. All speakers will have two minutes during this session. We respectfully ask that all speakers treat the council with the same respect you would expect to receive, and do not use, do not use for pen.
Okay, I am the First Amendment Auditor. And I know there are other First Amendment Auditors here tonight with me.
I'm Dan Warmer of auditing Erie County. And I'm here to talk to you about this policy of filming in public spaces, which is a First Amendment protected activity. This board should be ashamed of themselves, every single one of yous. Every single mayor, every board member should be ashamed of this policy. Let me read this. "This property is owned and run by the city of Rochester?" You guys don't own nothing! Alright, this is public property!
Listen y'all, these kids wanna act up in school? Wanna go to school and embarrass you? Want a man like that ain't got no home training? So I told my son, "Don't go to school, embarrass me no more." "I'll take care of you, son. I'll give you anything you want. I'll discipline you." "But you're gonna embarrass me like this? No, so now I'm gonna cut his hair."
Oh, they're gonna embarrass me?
Hey, do me a favor, keep away from the spot, guys. Now I saw you were in a restricted area. Now I want your item. You're not getting it.
Don't embarrass me, I told you, don't embarrass me, no!
Alright, Erie County fam. This video is all about the Rochester City Hall and this very policy that they have put in place that contradicts the First Amendment and the United States Constitution. This policy they have in place says that you have to ask for your First Amendment rights. So, before we get started with this, the meeting, let's go ahead and recap on my very first visit to Rochester City Hall and a second visit by another photographer. Then we will move on to the city council meeting, where we address this policy, because after the first visit, they did not learn their lesson. They doubled down and tripled down with signs and more stupid policies against your First Amendment rights.
You can't do that here.
Yeah, we can.
No, you cannot.
Why not?
You cannot take no pictures, you can't do video.
Inside the city hall?
Yes.
This is public.
Why you do it?
This is a First Amendment protected activity. This is a First Amendment, the Constitution, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of the press. I have freedom of the press that I can video record here.
Did you, did they give you permission to record?
You don't need permission.
You do.
You know, there's no pictures allowed in the building?
No, that's incorrect.
Excuse me?
That's incorrect, that would be a violation of the Constitution of the United States.
Every building has their own policies.
Yeah, but your, your policy can't trump the Constitution, can it?
I don't have the Constitution to trump that. Every, every business has their own policies.
This isn't a business, sir. This is, this is city hall.
This is city hall.
You're gonna restrict my access to this place? You're restricting the access to here, right?
Excuse me?
You are restricting the access to up there?
No, I'm asking you, are you?
I'm asking you, I'm asking the question to you.
No, you're not asking a question.
I am just asking. That is open to the public to walk up there, right?
It is.
Alright, cool. That's all I needed to know.
Okay, you drafted it, so you cannot take pictures or video without prior permission?
I am the assistant to, um, Lennox Kingsley.
You understand my First Amendment rights to be in this building and take photos anywhere is publicly accessible, correct? You can't make any laws or rules that go above it.
I'm like, listen, I'm just their assistant, I'll be commended as well.
So as of right now, as it stands, you cannot take any video or pictures without prior approval?
You understand that it goes against the Constitution?
I don't have anything to do with it as far as following the Constitution. We have to figure that out.
You don't follow the Constitution?
As of right now?
Look at that!
Stop recording me, I'm asking you to stop recording me.
No, sir. Will you please, will you give me five dollars?
Why not?
Will you give me five dollars?
I don't have to give you five dollars.
Oh, I don't have to stop recording?
Well, it's against the law, you cannot record anybody.
Say it again, say it's against the law to record in here.
Can I have you go in there?
Yeah, this is fine, this is publicly accessible. Is the public allowed to come in here and talk to you? Yeah, this is a question.
It's you.
Is the public allowed to come in here and come up to your desk? Yeah, so that's good.
Well, she's got, hey, hang on a second.
Alright, well, you give it a second, if there's anything, I'm just taking some photos in here. I'm not gonna take, I'm just taking some photos in the office here in the publicly accessible areas. But if you've got anything that's like classified information, if you wanna flip it over real quick?
No, 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 she's not gonna do that because you came in here.
Yeah.
Now I'm gonna have to ask you to stop, let's walk downstairs.
Listen, this is what I'm, this is what we're talking, this is what we're talking about.
Come on out for a second.
I'm just in here to take photos. Alright, I just gave her a chance to.
Listen, sir.
I gave her a chance to cover it up.
Alright.
That's being pretty good, right?
I don't wanna go through this point. Alright, I thought we were gonna work together.
You're at, you're acting, you're ass-
Documents over so you can come back for it?
Yeah, so I can take photos in public.
That's not what we're gonna do here.
You may not think so, but that's the way it works.
That's not the way it's gonna work now, 'cause I thought we were, I thought we were on the same page here.
She's not gonna flip it, I'll just take a quick photos in here. This is open to the public, sir.
I need you to step out of the office, please.
This is open to the public, we, I thought we just made-
Lock the door, please.
Don't lock the door, it'd be a violation of civil rights, don't do it, don't do it. Just don't do it.
Close your door.
It would be a bad idea, I'm telling you.
Mr. Hall?
I think you had more of a problem than she did. Sorry about that, he's making a big deal, don't lock the door. Are you on the clock right now?
Yep.
Sweet, I'm gonna get that photo.
I'm on about 24/7.
I'm gonna get that photo.
You'll never get this photo.
Oh yeah?
Okay, yep.
Take some more.
Gotcha.
He definitely took a photo?
Yep.
Alright, you said it. You wondering if I can video record in here yet? I can video record in here, you know that you're alright?
I don't like to be video first, I said, you just get that off of me.
No, sir.
So I'm doing my job, I'm always doing it.
You're a public.
Huh?
You're a public, sir.
Okay.
You work for the public.
I don't work for you.
You do.
No, I don't.
You do.
I do not.
I mean, I'll be your actual supervisor, but... I'm gonna go with him.
You're not.
For the city clerk.
You're just not.
What'd you say?
Don't worry about what I said.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Get out my face.
That's what I thought.
I'm telling you right now.
That's what I thought.
I'm gonna go back upstairs.
Talk shit. You're a public servant, you can't do that.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah? Let's see how long. He's, he's over here cursing at me, sir. Your new, your new young employees over here cursing at me. You're gonna hide your name tag? You're gonna hide your name tag? You're the director of security here, it shouldn't be that hard to find.
Public information, remember?
He thinks it's funny, guys. We're gonna get it, we're gonna post his salary and everything on here.
That's public information.
It is.
It is.
Look at him, guys, he hit his, he hit his thing. This is the, this is the professionalism down here, guys. Do you guys see the professionalism out of this guy? He's such a, he's a professional.
Invade my space, man.
He's a professional right here.
Invade my space.
He's, he's a professional, guys.
You invaded my space.
You're gonna pull the door out of my hand in this public building?
Closing the door.
You're gonna- They're trying to keep me out of the public building 'cause I'm video recording in public, trying to violate my civil rights? Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
You guys are talking, I'm, I'm keeping quiet.
Okay. What's going on? What are you trying to achieve, what's going on?
Just to video record in public, sir.
Okay, for what, what reason?
I'm working on a story with, as the press. I have a channel where I work on a story with the press and, uh, I'm just in public areas, taking pictures with the camera, working on a story. These guys detained me from going in certain areas, they're trying to tell me I can't go into the publicly accessible offices.
There's some certain areas that you can't do, but you're allowed to work.
If I go into an office and there's a desk, I don't go behind it. I don't reach my camera behind it, I wouldn't reach behind it.
That's good.
It's cool, alright? I just go in the publicly accessible, where the public is allowed. If I go up to an office that says restricted access, public employees only, I never would go in there, I have never, I did not. Um, the only offices I went into were the ones that are on the first floor here, they're freaking out, but like, anywhere that the public's allowed, I could go in there and take photographs.
Right.
It's part of my constitutional right. They're trying to tell me I have to leave, I can't be here doing pictures, that I have to ask permission for people to take their picture in public, which we all know is not true.
Okay.
Um, I'm an old threat, you don't have to wear the gloves, it's pretty hot out here. We ain't going hands-on, you tell me to leave, I'm being trespass, I'm gonna leave, but we'll take it up in court, but I'm just here.
You don't know whether it's going on exactly, so you're not-
Yeah, I'm not hostile, I'm, I don't got no weapons, I mean, I'm in the town, the city hall, just taking photos, you guys, no danger by me, all by all means, I don't mean no ill will. I'm just taking some photos.
Try avoid those spots, if they don't like it, but you're important.
Like I said, I walked into one office, he's like, "Oh, there might be sensitive information." I'm like, "You know what, if you want a second, flip it over real quick, I'll just take my picture and I'll be on my way real quick." You know, I gave him that option, I was being real respectful, but they, they seem to think here that you need, um, first off, they started off by telling me I can't take pictures in town hall or city hall. That it's illegal. It's a public place, so, um, I think all we need here is a little education, I just wanna go through my tour of the building, check out the publicly accessible areas, go through the hallways, take some pictures, what's available for the public, disseminate my information to the public, and that's all. And they're just, you know, they're trying to keep me from doing so, which would be violating my constitutional rights, doesn't make Rochester look real good, so, I'm counting on you to help me out here and let them know that I'm allowed to speak. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. And can I get your name and badge number?
Yeah, it's Cassian, two nine nine four.
Cool, thank you very much. My name, my name is Dan, by the way. I don't give out my last name, but, with respect, with respect, at least they know my name. Yeah, go ahead, I'm fine. Yeah, that's why I wanna record it. Yeah, privacy.
Okay, you're gonna stand farther back.
Are you detaining me?
No, I'm not detaining you.
Alright, thank you. And follow the law, for God's sake. It's a law enforcement, it's not human enforcement officers. You guys are about to cause a lawsuit for this city, not knowing the law.
How you doing, sir?
Not doing too well.
Would you like to talk to me alone?
Um, no, I'm, nothing to hide here.
What can I do for you?
Um, these guys are trying to borrow me from city hall and they're telling me to borrow me out of the city hall for doing a constitutionally protected activity. I'm just, you're the last, last ditch effort to, um, try to, uh, ease this situation, cause no lawsuit. Um, is my constitutional right to be inside this building, video recording in publicly accessible areas?
Okay.
That's all I did.
Okay.
Now they're trying to tell me they're gonna follow me around, they're gonna keep me out of here, they're borrowing me, I'm not even sure what borrowing me out, I don't know if they're trespassing or not.
Nope, there's no charges right now.
I understand that, 'cause I haven't done nothing illegal, but, can you get me in this building so I can take pictures of the building and leave, or?
So right now, if you enter back into the building, you'll be arrested for trespass. Um, and you're welcome to do any lawsuit, pursue any lawsuit that you want to after that.
And that's what you want the people to know?
Yes, sir, we're both recording, that's okay, you can record, I'm recording too. Um, I'm telling you right now that if you go back in the building, you'll be arrested for trespass.
Trusted, trespass?
But you're very welcome to record out here.
Arrested for trespassing for taking photos in public, right?
Going inside the city hall.
For taking photos?
I just, I just explained to you, so if you don't like that-
But you understand that they are borrowing me for taking photos in public, right?
You've heard what I said, right? You can take photos out here all you want to, we are not making you leave, okay? But you will be arrested for trespass if you enter the building.
Perfect, that's all I needed from you. There it is, Erie County fam, Rochester, New York.
Have you seen you're involved in this?
Yes, and as you've been told, you have to seek prior permission under city policy to videotape and streetball.
Doesn't top the Constitution. Constitution says I can go any public space until anything I can see-
No, it does not.
Actually, yes it does.
No, it does not.
Okay, well, we'll see.
I don't think videotaping is discussed in the Constitution. So, you're being asked to leave, if you don't leave when the police get here, they'll deal with it. That's your choice.
Who are you?
I'm the Corporation Counsel.
That's right, Erie County fam, that is your Corporation Counsel, AKA Rochester's attorney. But, before we move on to the regular scheduled program of the city council meeting, I do have an ad sponsored by the Communist Party of Rochester City Hall in a partnership for a civil rights-free America. Alright, Erie County fam, here we are once again. This is your civil rights. This is Rochester City Hall. This is your civil rights in Rochester City Hall. Any questions?
Uh, every, every business has their own policies.
Are you the city attorney? You understand that it goes against the Constitution?
I don't have anything to do with it as far as following the Constitution.
I don't think videotaping is discussed in the Constitution.
Well, Erie County fam, who's hungry for some Rochester City Hall civil rights? Who's hungry? Any questions? It is March 16th, we're down here at Rochester City Hall to speak to the city council. Let's go ahead and get inside.
Really, it's like six o'clock right now. Right?
Right.
You guys ready to go to justice, right?
No. I'm, I'm not, uh, speaking, it's my first city council meeting, but-
I'm sorry. You deserve a lot tonight, yeah.
Alright, talked to Mr. McIntyre and the city council about speaking here and recording today.
Do you want me to let McIntyre do that?
Talked to Mr. McIntyre about hour and a half ago.
I know, but you're coming with the camera again.
I know, and he said it's fine 'cause it's open to the public.
You're right. Can you change phones with metal?
No.
Okay. Give me a second, so my boss can come down here.
You need belt top, or belt-
No, neither belt, I'm just giving me a second. Fine, nothing.
City council meeting is- Up here?
Elevator, elevator.
He's also, but he's never let me up here, he's up there before, right?
Oh, okay.
To the third floor, I know where it's at, it's like, no. They never let me in this elevator. They can recognize me, huh? Am I on the right way for city council meeting? If you look at how gorgeous this building is, this thing is literally littered with display cases full of all sorts of artifacts and paintings. They just won't let you photograph it.
Speak to council, it's time for members of the public to comment on any and all matters and sign up for close today at 4:30 PM this afternoon. The list of speakers can be found at the back of the room and in the hallway. Speakers discussing legislation on this month's city council agenda are placed on the A-list. Speakers commenting on anything else are placed on the B-list. As a reminder, the council is here to listen to all matters, and it is customary that we do not respond. Given the volume of speakers, we ask that everyone remain seated until it is your turn to speak, at which time we may approach the podium. Now let's begin this month's public hearings. We will now begin our, uh, speak to council session. All speakers will have two minutes during this session. We respectfully ask that all speakers treat the council with the same respect you would expect to receive, and do not use, do not use for pen. Council members have contact information for all individual speakers tonight. In a follow-up time, you can sign up to their address. That may clip, uh, first white will call speakers to the podium and be asked to yield the podium at the end of two minutes.
My name is Karen Fowe. I'm a homeowner and a woman-owned business here in Rochester. I live in the 146th and 9th area. RGE exists to benefit shareholders in the detriment of the Rochester community. They are taking jobs out of Rochester and overcharging customers, which contributes to homelessness and food insecurity with no accountability. So I ask, why are we allowing corporate greed to continue? Why are we allowing citizens they have to choose between eating their own or paying for food and shelter? Why are key public officials not supported in an initiative that benefits all? Why are we letting a public official be swayed by RGE instead of serving the community that elected them? Why are we not investing in a long-term solution with public utility for the Rochester community which is more sustainable and affordable? Why? Um, the city has to take responsibility for this regional issue and not New York State. The state has no authority in the matter on a prolonged study indefinitely. We know the city has the power to commission and fund this study with the input from, uh, the public and Metro Justice. The utilization study is worth the $500,000 we are asking for. The public-owned utility will stop RGE from hemorrhaging millions out of our region. We want a locally-owned, community-controlled public utility. This will include locally-elected board members, local experts, ratepayers, and local utility workers who can make decisions about our energy instead of an international corporation that raises rates, cuts service to increase the shareholder profits. We as a community need to bring this money back to Rochester where we can provide for our community in a more sustainable and affordable way now and for future generations. Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm speaking on behalf of Metro Justice of Rochester for Energy Democracy to launch a campaign to turn RGE into a public utility. The following account is submitted to our website by Janet Beck. Janet moved to Rochester three years ago. Janet is on heat but never saw the heat credit on her bill. All she would see was that she was enrolled in a budget plan. She tried calling about this and was told RGE didn't take heat payments. She was told that they put those people on budget plans. The budget plan had her paying an additional $70 a month, but Janet never saw her bill go down because of these payments. From May to November, Janet had her gas furnace turned off, which was the only thing in her house that used gas. Despite being turned off, she was still being charged for gas each month, even though the meter stayed the same the whole time. RGE told her that they had read her meter and it was up, even though she has pictures of the meter showing that it had not changed. Additionally, Janet was charged $100 for not being there at a time when RGE needed to check her meters. Janet is disabled and does not work, so she was always out of her house and knows they did not come. Not only that, when her meters are on the outside of her house, so she wouldn't have needed to let anyone in had they actually come, which they didn't. Janet stated that every time it was announced that they were adding a one-time payment to accounts with heat benefits, she would get charged instead of credited that month. When she tried to enroll in a budget plan, she was told she would lose the heat credit and wouldn't qualify for heat anymore. Janet stated that she grew up in Monroe County and can remember when RGE was only in the city and a few suburbs before it took over the entire county. Janet had previously lived in both Fairport and Spencerport and while using their public utility, paid lower bills and had no problem with communication. Janet stated that if she moves again, she would be considering a place where the utility is not controlled by RGE. On behalf of Janet, myself, and so many others, I'm here today asking for your help. Rochester for Energy Democracy needs the, needs the city of Rochester to allocate $500,000 to fund an implementation study. If you have the interest of Rochesterians in your heart, you will take this ask seriously. This is for us, for the people of Rochester. Thank you greatly for your time.
I'm here to address the urgency of the need for a public utility. RGE is incompetent and primarily focused on problems.
Good evening, I'm here again as the organizing director at Metro Justice and a lifelong Rochesterian. On behalf of Metro Justice and the Rochester for Energy Democracy Movement, I commend city council's majority support for allocating up to $500,000 for an implementation study for a public utility in the Rochester and Monroe County area. Let's stay focused on what's at stake here for the city. Over 200,000 city residents have a real chance to fight back against RGE, a corporation that is directly responsible for poverty in this city that offers platitudes instead of real results to solve issues.
Hello, please listen to me carefully. Rochester Gas and Electric is a mercenary organization exploiting our community with the net result of increased poverty for our city. What this group does, RGE, it uses our Rochester as a playground for exploiting and extorting money. Now, I can tell you about the $544 that I lost. I've heard other stories, forget about me. I have heard people losing $1,000, $2,000. I have heard people who, poor, work, come home, have two jobs, three jobs, have kids. They can sit on the phone that way I did and try to call RGE and-
My name is Suzanne Phillips. I've lived in Monroe County for over 50 years and in the Chillicothe area for 43. Desperately needed study that could lead to assisting the county to provide its own public utility. A little over a year ago, RGE sent me a bill for $5,900, way over what it should have been.
Good evening, can you write a walk-in? Let me look at this, with our entire rights, I'll start from the avenue. Where's that RGE account, that appear after us?
Good evening, my name is Chris Enzo Cipriani. I live and work in Rochester and I'm here with Metro Justice to demand at least a half a million dollars in funding for an implementation study to replace RGE with a local public utility. As we built this campaign over the last years and months, speaking to ratepayers all over the city, we've encountered even more exploitation and injustice than we'd expected.
When are you gonna stand up and do what's right for your constituents of this city? The people that are gonna ask, on June 27th, or are you gonna be asking for reelection? I ask you today, what have you done to earn your seats? What have you done to keep your seats? I support that this lawsuit. It is time you bring Rochester back to Rochester and not to Rochester.
Evening, counsel, uh, my name is Clayton, I'm a resident and customer of Harris's District. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Red Campaign. Uh, thank you to those of you who have listed your support for our public utility study. Okay, RGE is not prior to safety or efficiency. Uh, the few customers who have not been missbilled are still met with unreliable power delivery and integrated infrastructure.
Oh, that's good. My name is Rosen Murray, I'm a Murray guy. I come here to come first. I'm setting the RGE, like, out of service, I'm taking my home.
Hey there, Jesse Pemberton, like, from, um, resident, born and raised Rochester, New York. It's, they're like, "Hey, RGE is giving us issues."
Good evening, city council. My name is Amy Hoyt, and I'm a Rochester city resident, and I serve as commissioner on the Rochester City School District for Education. Many of my own constituents have told me their own stories about surprise bills from RGE.
Hello, my name is Courtney Kristen, and I moved home to Rochester from Denver last year to give back to my home community. I'm a resident of Rochester and a member of the Research Working Group for Rochester for Energy Democracy through Metro Justice. I wanna speak to you tonight about some more established public utilities that could be-
Don't start that yet. Give me a week, give me four seconds? Just gotta pull through, you know? Yeah. Okay, I am a First Amendment Auditor, and I know there are other First Amendment Auditors here tonight with me. One in particular has a huge following and has several very detailed documentary-style videos on his channel that detail blatant civil rights abuses, threats of arrest, denial of services, in this very building. These abuses stem simply from his peacefully exercising his rights. Over 200,000 people worldwide have seen these three videos. This person's subscriber count is growing every day. And unfortunately for you, Mr. Mayor, and you nine city council members, this building, in which we're sitting right now, is not located inside of Soviet Russia, Communist China, or even England during the Middle Ages. Unfortunately for you, this building is located inside the US Unfortunately for you, this building is located inside the US and we still do have the Constitution and First Amendment. And a law, statutes, ordinances, policy, or anything else you might dream up, scribble on a piece of paper and sign your name to, need not be... Need to be consistent with the Constitution, not in direct conflict with it. Every person who has one of these is the press and their official press credentials are the First Amendment.
Yes.
Also, I don't want to keep piling on with bad news here, but you should, and each, each one of you, become at least a little familiar with Title 18, Section 242 of the US Penal Code. This section makes it a crime for any person acting under color of law or policy to willfully deprive another person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution. The event is punishable by a race of infringement up to a life term or the death penalty. So you might want to think about rescinding your policy.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Marcy Rochette, I have been paying my RGE bill for a long time.
My name is Orson Reynolds and I am a resident of Rochester, I've been here all my life. And I'm here, also here for the community, for our people of Rochester, New York, when it comes to RGE. Listen, I didn't even open this up because it's a shame and it's awful, right?
I'm Dan Warmus of auditing Erie County. And I'm here to talk to you about this policy of filming in public spaces, which is a First Amendment-protected activity. I don't know where this board gets off putting a law or a policy that supersedes the United States Constitution. I'm here tonight, I don't know about RGE or whatever this board of, that is raping the people of this town or the city. And the fact that you guys have a policy that limits accountability on your guys' end for bringing cameras into public space, that's outright ridiculous, alright? Let me hear it from the people who are sick of being raped and pillaged by this board doing nothing. Let's hear it! Where is the accountability? What is wrong with a camera in public space? Tell me that. Can anybody tell me where the harm of accountability comes from? You guys sit here silent right now, but the people of this city need to know, why is their First Amendment being pillaged by you guys? What is the harm in a camera inside city hall in the publicly accessible areas? That is a constitutionally-protected activity. You have no right to supersede the Constitution on that. And on top of it, what is wrong with the camera? That's nothing but accountability. What are you guys dodging accountability down here? These people back here talking about their electric bill or gas bill, that shit's ridiculous. Where is the accountability? And you guys just want to keep accountability from these people? You guys are gonna do nothing? What's it gonna take to get this board in order? This board should be ashamed of themselves, every single one of you. Every single mayor, every board member should be ashamed of this policy. Let me read this. This property is owned and run by the city of Rochester? You guys don't own nothing! Alright, this is public property. Public! The public owns it. You guys were voted in to have a right to be here. You have a right to be here, just as much as this camera and every camera, and I'm gonna get... Get shit on the way in to have a camera in here? You guys have, need some accountability down here is the problem. Let's hear it for accountability! Let's hear it, where is the accountability?
Our next speaker is Sandra Morales. My name is Sandra Morales, I'm a lifelong city of Rochester resident, here in support of Metro Justice's efforts for a public utility. RGE has been a cause of many problems.
Today, you heard from a couple of First Amendment auditors, I am not one of them, I am not yet dedicated. But last year, I saw the video where a journalist from Buffalo got thrown out of city hall for filming in public areas. Like I said, I'm a photographer, I can understand the law, if I'm allowed to be someplace, I can film anything I can see. So, I wasn't happy with what I saw. On September 1st, I came down to city hall, I was down in, I got a spot in the lobby downstairs, I was stopped by security, I was not allowed to move around. I was told I was breaking the law by filming, I was told I was breaking the law by being there. I waited long enough, I noticed some supervision came over, I did get to go up to the atrium. And I'll tell you, it's a beautiful building, it's not just for the employees. So, when I get to the atrium, I do some filming, and then Livy Keithley over here decides to go over, RGE tells me that I have to leave. Now, my understanding of trespass in a public building is I have to break the law, trespass is a secondary charge. So, I told her that, and then I also told her I have a First Amendment right to be here, and that's why she told me, hey, you know what? There was no cameras when the Constitution was written, and I think that's foolish. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is, this is a beautiful building, it should be for the public. Anybody who wants to come here, should be able to come here and take as many photographs as they want. This is a beautiful place and we pay for it. I guess that's all I got to say.
This is the only city in Western New York, only city in Western New York with a policy like that. Only city in Western New York.
I'm here to speak about the allocation of funds for an implementation study to turn RGE into a public utility. They've been sending $500,000 to replace RGE with a public utility. I also would like to voice my displeasure against the idea that we can't film in a public place, this is my first time hearing about it, but we do have First Amendment right. However, I'm here to speak mainly on RGE and the...
A civil rights-free America. Ooh, that's tasty. Communism, wah!
We living in society now where people want to record how they discipline their child. The people that might get mad with this video is the people that probably already embarrassed their child. You can't discipline your child in their room, take something away from them. If they act up, I'm like, "Son, you can't play the game."